The time is now seven o'clock and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, August 13, 2018. Jackie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carrubas?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Mr. Resac?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We have a quorum, and Ms. Donahue, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we just have one board salute. Mr. Rising?
Yes, happy to say or announce the Board salutes Kendall Elementary LMC Director Rhonda Jenkins on being named a Spotlight Educator by the Midwest Education Technology Community. This recognition honors educational leaders who are making a difference for students and teaching by using technology. This is reflected in increased knowledge, improved skills, and academic achievement by integrating technology into their instructional practices. Congratulations, Rhonda.
Thank you. And it is now time for a public comment for non-agenda items. We have three people who are speaking, two agenda items, so they will speak a little bit later. If you are here to s- that's what I just said. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. And the non-agenda item speaker is Mary Brill. And Mary, come right to the front here.
I'm sorry, this is-
Right to the front here. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mary Brill, and I have two students in the district, one at Wabonzie and one at McCarty. And two things I would like to, I guess, make the Board aware of is that the student fees, the registration fees, I was not able to find a breakdown as to what that money goes to. And then I'm getting additional fees for the different things that my children take and that are- they're scheduled to take. So my question to the Board and/or one of the business administrators is, where's the breakdown of the $195 for my daughter and $145 for my son? I think the Board needs to take in consideration that not all parents can pay $500 for registration fees and all these additional fees, even though they're not considered under the federal poverty line. I think that's something that the Board should consider, some type of waiver fee, some type of assistance for not just my children, but other students that may be coming into the district like my own.
Okay. Thank you. And will somebody reach out to her? Thank you. We're now moving to our consent agenda and superintendent report, and we always begin with the superintendent report.
Okay. We are in full back-to-school mode. On Friday, we welcomed about 125 new teachers and staff to the district, and they're spending an additional two full days this week getting acclimated to District 204. Thank you to Mark and Mike for helping us welcome them, making them feel welcome to come to the district. On Wednesday, it will be an extremely exciting day. It's still middle school. If you have an opportunity to come, it is our annual kindergarten preview day. There is nothing more exciting than all these little ones who are coming to find out about food and buses and all those good things. So Preview Day is on Wednesday from 9:00 to 12:00, and then again from 1:30 to 4:00. There are various booths there and staff to ready- answer questions about riding the bus, food service, safe and sound program, et cetera, and we encourage all of our kindergarten families to attend. It really is fun if you have a chance to stop by. On Thursday, all of our teachers report back for their individual building institute, and on Friday is our district-wide institute. We look forward to seeing everyone on Friday as I make my way around to each of our high schools where our teachers are meeting to speak briefly, briefly, and to honor our staff members for their 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service to the district. So we'll welcome our students back next Tuesday, the 21st, to begin the 2018-19 school year. So we have, and that's really it, because we're really busy trying to get ready for all of that. We have one new administrative replacement hire on our agenda that I want to introduce to you tonight, and that is our Director of Digital Learning position for our ELO program. This program is a collaboration between Indian Prairie, Naperville 203, and Community Unit District 200. All three districts were involved in bringing this recommendation forward to you. So we're bringing forward Laura Nylund for this position. Laura has worked most recently for us at Indian Prairie as an instructional specialist. She's been a teacher, an LMC director, an educational consultant, and unfortunately for us, Laura cannot be here tonight because she's taking her oldest, her firstborn, to college today. So she's doing that. So we're excited to recommend Laura Nylund for your approval to the position of Director of Digital Learning for ELO.
Okay. And do I have a motion that the Board of Education approve Laura Nylund as Director of Digital Learning?
I move that the Board of Education approve Laura Nylund as the Director of Digital Learning for ELO as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Resac?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Motion passes. And congratulations, Laura. Are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. And then we go to our consent agenda. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through I.
I make a move that the Board approve Consent Agendas E through I as presented.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Resac?
Aye.
Motion passes. This could be the fastest Board meeting.
Live long, yes.
The face of the earth.
We needed you to hire all those people.
It's now time for public comment for the agenda item which will be Engage 204. Again, the same rules apply. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. And again, there will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but a follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. First speaker for Engage 204 is Bertha Jackson. And welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bertha Jackson. I've been a member of District 204 for now over 12 years. I had two students that graduated from Wabonzie, and I have a senior this year. I've served as President of Pages during the 2016-2017 school year, and last year I served as co-chair of the Pages Tutoring Program. I consider myself an engaged, committed, and concerned parent and community member. Tonight, I just want to remind the Board that the achievement gap matters, and regardless of where it appeared on the list of recommendations, that it really deserves our full, undivided, and ongoing attention. The achievement gap is why we created Pages. It's the reason why I volunteer my time and my energy to it. Ultimately, it's also the reason that one day I hope to retire as a math teacher one day. I don't need to tell all of you, but I'll remind you, the achievement gap has such an oppor- such an impact on our students even after they leave the high school. That's why it's so important. So as you consider these list of recommendations that you have here, there's a couple that I think that we can purposefully take and imply to help the achievement gap. So we have on the list of recommendations that we're going to decrease the class sizes. I am keeping in mind that that probably means hiring more teachers, as well as the increase of mental health staff for the community. All of those things, we can deliberately and purposefully hire a diverse staff to help those opportunities that we know will impact the achievement gap. Likewise, I also hope that the district will continue developing more personalized curriculum for our students. And ultimately, with working with the students at the tutoring program, one aspect that I would just plead with the district is to look into how we can help our teachers develop relationships with our students. That has such a powerful impact on our kids, regardless of their African-American or any other culture. We really need to connect with these students. I speak to so many of them during the tutoring program, and the connection between them and their teacher, it just doesn't exist. So somehow, some way, inside these building walls, we need to really drive home our efforts. And of course, as Pages, we will continue working to increase parent engagement. We'll continue and develop our tutoring program at Wabonzie. We'll continue in doing everything that we can to eliminate this opportunity gap because we understand the impact that it has on our students. So I look forward to working with all of you, collaborating, and working together to increase all of our students' academic success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is A.J. Collier. Good evening and welcome.
So like Bertha, I am very much entrenched in this district, love this district. I have two students that have graduated in the district and one current junior at Wabonzie. I am a member of Pages, like Bertha. I'm a former president of Pages and a current director, former co-chair. We're kind of many things in common of the tutoring program as well. And this just kind of feels like deja vu all over again. If it sounds like repeat remarks, it's because it is. Before the end of the school year last year, a few of us voiced our concerns over the community engagement process and how decisions are being made about the district's priorities. And now that the votes have been cast from the, I think, 128 to 150 or so members of the community that showed up to the engagement sessions, and we're moving right along with the implementation, it just kind of feels like the right time to reiterate some of those points that were made earlier. And it's also important to say that we don't disagree with any of the priorities. It's extremely important, class sizes and maintenance and facilities, all of that's extremely important, not taking anything away of that. It's also very important, however, to note that there are certain items that, again, cannot be relegated to a popularity contest. Educational institu- institutions must educate. It's fundamental to a school system's existence to educate, and it's not optional. So those institutions cannot work for some and not for others. So if there are large swaths of the population that's served by this good district that continually, year over year, show up at the bottom end of the scales, then that's more than concerning. And specifically, of course, we're talking about matters of equity and the achievement gap. So this is a priority also. So we are committed, in our organization, in Pages, to our mission and to doing our part. We're doing everything we can to help our students and to engage our parents. And if the district is doing something also to move the needle forward in closing the achievement gap, then we certainly want to know what that is. It really is time for thoughtful, deliberate, and a comprehensive plan. Please do share that with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Alona Restus.
Good evening, Board. Ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome.
I would just like to, as President of Pages at Wabonzie Valley High School, I would like to just agree with my two colleagues that just spoke on the topic of the achievement gap, and that is why I am standing here before you as well. We understand that we have the EOS Initiative in place. We understand that African-American students who are performing near AP level have the opportunity to bring themselves up to that level. However, we need not forget the African-American students who are struggling academically, and because these things, according to SB 100, are not actually at an accomplished position, a quote, according to the Chicago Lawyers Committee for Human Rights, it stated that Illinois schools have a long road ahead. Now, if we have a long road ahead, then surely we need to have this item continuously on our list of priorities until such time as there is this amazing change that we're looking for. And as Bertha Jackson was saying earlier, there are children that are not connecting, so I just want to share your- my experience with Readiness Day. On Friday, at Readiness Day, there were students that were coming in from ninth grade, shoulders hung, face hung. "Hi, great to be in Grade 9, looking forward to the year ahead." No. Why? Just can't get on with the teachers. So it is definitely an issue, and I have experienced it firsthand at Readiness Day. So what I want everybody to be aware of is that the one thing we must not do is acclimatize to the status quo. We need to shatter the status quo, shatter it, and put in place what will enable equity to prevail. And I want to thank you all for your time, and we look forward to a very, very prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now our discussion item, implementing Engage 204 recommendations from the administration.
Hi, J.
Hi.
I'm not up here by myself tonight. I'd like to start by taking us back a year ago. At that point in time, we were talking about state funding formula where we were going to lose $3 million a year, each year over a period of years, which was really going to hurt the school district. After we passed our budget in the late fall, the State of Illinois passed the evidence-based funding model, which changed our financial picture and holds us pretty stable, and we're not going to lose those $3 million. But during that process, the Board of Education asked for us to really engage the community, to look at what the needs are of the district, and to work through what our strengths and some of our needs are as a school district. And so through the course of the next year, there were five presentations over a variety of topics in front of a number of community members ranging from 100 to 250 people. Each of those sessions was a couple hours in length. It's still middle school, and at the end of that, there was an activity for those groups to report back what they heard and what recommendations they had for us to move forward on those specific topics. Tonight, we're going to share with you a summary of what those Engage 204 topics were and what the recommendations that the community brought to the top and what our recommendations are and move forward. One of the struggles that you're going to hear through this is that we can't do everything that was recommended. We can do some things immediately, some things in the short term, and some things are going to continue to be long-term projects just because of the nature of our funding, and we'll go through that as we go through the presentation. The priority recommendations for- I think you're a slide ahead of me.
Sorry.
The priority recommendations for- from the community were to first look at our class size. Our class sizes are larger than our comparable districts and larger than most of the districts in the state of Illinois. During those times of austerity, for us to balance our budgets, for us to run a balanced budget and not create a financial difficulty in the district, we made reductions in personnel. Personnel is 75 to 80% of the cost of the school district. So for us to make our reductions and to run a balanced budget, we made reductions in licensed staff, classified staff, administrative staff, in addition to other areas. So when that happens, class sizes go up, administrative pupil ratios go up, and you've got staff members who are doing more and serving more and working harder. So class size was an area where that rose to the top as one. Our deferred maintenance projects of $10 million, as I said before, during the austerity times, we really needed to balance our budgets, and one of the first places that we went for reductions was putting the necessary money into our facilities to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the infrastructure of the school district. So we've now have a $10 million deferred maintenance backlog. Teacher salaries of $7.5 million. When Engage 204 started, we were at the bottom of our comparable districts. We were not competitive with the number of comparable districts with teacher salaries, and we were in a position where we might be losing some- batteries must have died. We were- could possibly be losing some staff members to neighboring districts if we didn't address that. Additional staff of $4.2 million for social, emotional, and at-risk kids was another area. Updating our locks in our intercomp systems was a priority to address some of the needs of our safety and security throughout the district. Alternative space for our alternative high school students in our STEPS program at $1.2 million. Elementary air conditioning, we- that's, I believe, we're in the fourth year of the elementary air conditioning installation, and we've been plugging away at trying to finalize getting those classrooms air-conditioned. There's two more phases. If we were to do it in one phase, we're looking at a $7 million expense. And as I mentioned earlier, we've deferred a lot of maintenance projects because we cut in our operations and maintenance and our capital outlay. We're spending $4 million less than what our facility assessment said we should be spending. So bringing that $4 million up to the recommended level so that we don't continue to add items to the deferred maintenance is another item for consideration that came from the community. In immediate planning, we really need to get after our deferred maintenance. Some of our deferred maintenance projects will start in 2018, 2019. We are in the midst of putting together a deferred maintenance plan that's going to take a number of years for us to address the backlog of needs. Actually, I think it's the next Board meeting that we'll be making that presentation to the Board of Education. Our focus is going to be on the building envelope and the mechanical units, not necessarily the carpet and the painting and the drywall and the ceiling tiles, but the masonry, the asphalt, the ceiling, the roofs, and the boilers and heating and cooling systems. That heating plan will be one, that deferred maintenance plan will be one that will take a number of years and will be addressed with the available dollars that are left over at the end of each school year. We'll go into that in more detail next Board meeting.
As you're aware, the mental health needs of students all over and in our district as well are increasing. This was an area that the Engage 204 participants had prioritized. Through Title I grants, the IDEA grant, and some staff attrition FTE, we've been able to hire additional mental health staff at all of our elementary schools. So each elementary school will now have a full-time mental health provider in their building, as well as typically a part-time person. That might be the school psychologist, the school social worker, and in a couple of our Title I buildings, using our Title I grants, we have a position we're calling an SEL coach, and that is either a licensed school social worker or a licensed school counselor. So we are excited to see what we can do to support the needs of our students with mental health issues, as well as building teacher capacity for mental health.
As you're well aware, the safety and security of our students is our top priority, and one of the items that came to the top during the Engage 204 was updating our locks in our intercomp systems throughout the entire school, school district. That's an immediate planning. Our goal is to get that done over two or three years. It's just the scale of the number of locks that we need to change out in order to get that done, but that $2 million will be allocated, and we will put a plan together which will make sense. It starts with our secondary schools and moves down to our elementary schools for new locks and intercomp systems. Those locks will be available for every classroom so that you can lock from the inside without the key by using a tumbler or bolt, so that you can use those gross motor skills. And our intercomp systems will be upgraded so that you can make a public address announcement from any area in the school, not just from the main office, which will enhance our ability to communicate throughout the schools.
Another area that we are taking a look at is actual space for alternative high school, which is currently Indian Plains, and also our STEPS program. As the Board is already aware, there's been a great deal of feedback that we have received from STEPS parents about having the program in three locations last year. Some of the planning that has taken place and continues to take place, we have consolidated the program to now only have 16 students at the Wabonzie Valley site, with the overwhelming majority now at the Burkett Center. Before planning continues with the STEPS program, a top priority remains is to what we'll be doing for our Indian Plains program and what we need to address the needs of the Indian Plains facility. In the past, as we've shared with you, that the existing building is in need of major structural repairs. We shared with you last year that we recommend using the existing facility for one more year, and that would be this upcoming school year. And then we do need to prioritize and find another location for the Indian Plains program. Currently, we're in the process of finding a suitable location and plan to bring you a recommendation in the very near future.
As Jay mentioned, we are in Phase 4 of the elementary air conditioning project. At the end of that proj- at the end of Phase 4 for this school year, we'll have 67% of our classroom, elementary classrooms that have a ductless air conditioning unit. So we are excited about that in elementary land. That means that at the very most, teachers need to partner with another classroom in order to share that air conditioning unit on those really hot days. And as Jay mentioned, the additional phases are to be completed based upon the funds available. It's another $7 million to complete the entire project, so this will be something that is ongoing.
As you know, we had the unique experience of negotiating the teachers' contract while Engage 204 was occurring. So you'll notice that we do identify this one as an intermediate planning. All the previous ones were immediate planning. This is intermediate, and then you'll see the remaining ones will be long-term planning. While we did negotiate, I think, a very good contract for the teachers, where we did increase starting teacher salaries, we're no longer the lowest amongst our current comparables, but we know that we're going to also be back in negotiations in three years, most likely, to start those conversations again, and that we have to keep that in mind of where we're trying to get to with our teacher salaries based on the feedback we did receive from the community.
The community also recommended looking at lowering class sizes. Our recommendation for this is to have a long-range plan should additional state funding become available that could accommodate this suggestion. It would require approximately $16.7 million to cover the- It would require approximately sixteen point seven million dollars to cover the additional annual salaries. If funds did become available, research indicates that the greatest impact could be made by reducing class sizes in our lowest grade levels at schools where the highest percentage of low-income families exist. Before this could be implemented, we would recommend a comprehensive district-wide boundary assessment to review shifting students and additional students new to our district. When the Engage 204 session was in progress, and we had the discussion about boundaries, we didn't know at that time that Wagner Farms had been sold for housing. We're still waiting for the number of students that will come from that development, but it will likely be significant. And the underutilized classrooms in the south end of the district will most likely be full for those students.
Another long-term project is to bring our capital maintenance spending up to the four million dollars, additional four million dollars for a total of eight point five million dollars annually. As you're all aware, this is the second year of the evidence-based funding formula. In the first year of the formula, we received our hold harmless, and we received eight hundred thousand dollars of tier money. We're in tier two. Not a lot of money when you're talking a district our size. Just last week, we received our second-year notification of what we would receive. We're receiving the same hold harmless, which is the hold harmless plus last year's eight hundred thousand dollars, plus an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not a lot of money for a district our size. Certainly is going to be a struggle when you're talking about some of the needs across the district. Clearly, the money's going to the tier-one districts. And then hopefully, in the next few years, the tier-one districts meet their goal, and the money starts to come to the tier-two districts, and some of this work can get done. Until that time, when additional money is available from a variety of sources, bringing the four point five million dollars that we spend annually on average to the eight point five is going to be difficult to do. Our immediate recommendations to the board is to develop a deferred maintenance reduction plan so we can get some of those past projects completed. And to get those done over a number of years, but as quickly as possible. Add mental health staff primarily at the elementary level. Upgrade our locks and intercoms. Consolidate STEPS to the two locations. Secure a location for Indian Plains for the nineteen-twenty school year, and continue to install elementary air conditioning. Intermediate plans are to continue to aim for our average, average of our comparable district teacher salaries. We've got a four-year contract, and hopefully, in the next few years, we'll be able to position ourselves where we can do that. And then long-term, we're to reduce our class size and consistently fund our maintenance at the recommended level. It's important, as we close out, that this was not a, necessarily an administrative-driven community engagement. There was members, leaders from the community who gave a lot of their time to plan, pre-plan, look at the recommendations, and summarize those for us all. And I'd like to take the opportunity now just to say thank you to those community leaders who stepped up and attended a number of meetings, both at the central office and at the full-blown community engagement. With that, we'd be happy to take questions.
Questions?
When we started this project, there were some that talked about, this was just an effort to go to referendum. I don't see any of that here. We're not, none of these recommendations include going to the voters and asking to raise their taxes. Yes, there's additional spends. But if you add up all these spends, they exceed our budget. So it's just like any budget. You've got to allocate what dollars you have to what priorities you can make. Mine continued to be the deferred maintenance and the capital maintenance. Seems like we're in a vicious cycle there, where if we have a deferred maintenance spending plan, and yet we're still have deficiencies, we're digging out of the hole and still digging into the hole at the same time. And I think that that's where we're going to be in a vicious cycle, where if we don't start that, it's going to keep getting bigger and bigger. So that would be my priority. And then I like the elementary school air conditioning. I think, as we talked about when we started down the plan. Yeah, but it does come down to equity when we started. You can't have different buildings, different classrooms now, where some have air conditioning and some don't. And I think in our society now, we all like conditioned air. So I think we should finish that project. And so those would be where I would put my priorities. Otherwise, I support administration's recommendations. I think there's a lot of good projects here, but we don't have the dollars to put everywhere. Thanks.
I'd just like to say it's a good summary, Mr. Krubus. We are trying to meet the needs of the community engagement with the means that are available. And as every dollar becomes available, we will be discussing as a cabinet and making recommendations to the board about how we can continue to whittle away at these projects.
So in fact, with the new funding, I looked at the Lend information. And even with the new funding that we received, we're still at seventy-nine percent adequacy.
Correct.
So our district next to us is over a hundred percent.
Well over.
So again, I think it's important to reiterate the differences in that we're still at a point at seventy-nine percent adequacy to do everything the state says we should be doing. I'd like to reinforce with what Mr. Krubus said, and what you said, actually. First of all, although we asked for administrative recommendations today, clearly, these recommendations came from a group of community members. Because the board turned over community engagement to the community so that we would not contaminate the process. And I'd like to reinforce that I've not, I did not hear during the course of all Engage 204 a will for referendum, nor did I hear from our parent leaders that we should go to referendum. So from my perspective, we're still at a chip-away kind of status. I think, you know, we need to respond to our community, and we need to respond to what we heard. We have to do what we have to do, which is to be financially responsible and chip away at this stuff. So if I was going to say where we're at, we're continuing to chip away, we're a little bit better off than we were a couple of years ago because of the evidence-based funding.
Correct.
I understand my two cents, too. So, you know, first of all, I mean, the, when we first, when we first, as a board, decided to go out and do this, what was to become the Engage 204, kind of like Jay had initially alluded to, is that we were facing some tough budget decisions that I think as a board, we recognized we had a certain prioritize. And while the board probably could have easily done that, it was, I think we all best felt that it was most important to engage our community, which goes back to our district goals, to be student and community-focused. And, you know, things eventually turned around, and we are not in the dire situation we thought we were going to be at that point. But these are still some items that, you know, we still had to prioritize. And I think what has been presented to us, you know, with the immediate planning, with the additional maintenance and mental health staff, and doing something for IP and the Indian Plains kids and STEPS consolidating, you know, those, I kind of go back and look at, those all align with our goals, right? So, you know, to help all students grow emotionally, socially, academically, and hiring and requiring quality staff and manage our resources effectively and efficiently. And this isn't always easy to do, and there's no right answer. I mean, never when I got on board seven years ago did I think we would even have elementary at all in the element, or air conditioning in the elementary schools, because we just weren't in a position to do that. But what has been great about this board and administration and our community, and I want to thank, you know, the community that came out to all those meetings, is that we've found ways to kind of chip away at things. And kind of what Mike said, you know, we'll get there. It's not going to be maybe as quick as some people would like, or as Justin would like to fix all our buildings right away, but, or Sally would like to fix our class sizes right away. But, but we're able to chip away at these things, and I think we're seeing the progress. So I'm excited about it. I'm excited to hear about the Indian Plains recommendation. And, you know, I think we'll keep our focus on doing what's best for STEPS and class sizes. And, you know, we'll get through this as the evidence-based funding changes. So I just want to say thanks to administration, and I think we did a good job. And contrary to popular belief, we're not going out for referendum.
Others?
So I appreciate all the work that went into this from everyone, the staff, the community. The priorities that were recommended are important ones. And I think chipping away is the right terminology to say what we can achieve with the financial money that we have on hand. I also wanted to point out that I believe our student population went down last year, and it's projected to go down again this year. But yet, we are maintaining our staff and adding staff. So sometimes that gets lost in all of the, you know, things that go on in the district. But, you know, we continue to make that a priority and an important aspect of delivering a quality experience in our district, both from a teaching perspective as well as a support perspective. And I encourage us to continue to do that.
The priority recommendations are listed here. Is that in order of most to least? Okay, that's what I thought. So, you know, class size on here, it's been talked about quite a bit. Sixteen point seven million. You know, there could be some that look at this list and say, well, if class size was the number-one recommended priority, then why aren't we doing it? Well, I think the price tag that comes with it is why. So, you know, like Justin said, you know, there's no talk of a referendum. But if this is truly what, you know, the community is recommending, then that's the only way it could happen, in my mind, along with many of these other things. Now, because we are taking the approach of chipping away at it, keeping our teachers even though enrollment is declining, I think that is the more responsible way to do that, unless, again, we hear from our community to say, we want to give you a lot of money. Because, I mean, I liken this too, to, you know, your own, think of your own home. You might need new windows, you might need a new roof, you might need new carpeting. Well, what's the priority? So, you know, just like your own home, you have to prioritize unless and until you get more money. And there's ways of doing that. So, you know, we get a little bit here, more here and there from the state, or, you know, again, keeping those teachers even though enrollment's down. Those are ways we can do that and kind of manage that. And so I just don't want this to get lost in here, that these are the priorities, why aren't we doing them? You know, you're not doing anything about them. And I don't want people to confuse long-term planning with, oh, we're just going to push that down the road. Because that's not what this is. This is, I mean, we've all put a lot of thought into this. So just because class size is shown as number one, but yet it's a long-term plan, it has to be a long-term plan with this amount of money that it's going to cost to do that. So I appreciate the community's input on this, because this is very valuable. And that's why I don't want to see it lost in that, in the communication in here that, well, we said class size was important, but you're not doing anything about it. Well, we can't right now. That's the reality. But it is on the radar, and I look forward to seeing, you know, how we can chip away at this.
I really appreciate, first, the persons that did come out and spent time giving us feedback and sharing their thoughts during this whole process. And we did ask for those that weren't able to attend to definitely send in their information via email. And so we did get some of that feedback. I really appreciate the due diligence taken, and as Justin and Lori commented, from the fact that, yes, we see what the number-one through eight priorities were. You know, we all have to make decisions, even though we might want this, what can we really afford with the resources that we have? So I appreciate that, taking a look at what our district goals are with making sure that, you know, we help all students grow academically, socially, and emotionally. Just ensuring that as we are going through these priorities and determining how we proceed, that we certainly keep those, that in mind, as well as ensuring that we are financially and fiscally responsible, which of course we're doing. I would like to indicate that I definitely feel the mental health staff, that that's something that I think, that I'm happy to see is on the immediacy side, as well as the locks and the intercoms, as far as immediacy. And as a couple of people mentioned earlier that spoke, just ensuring that, you know, as we're looking at that growth of all of our students academically, socially, and although we're not seeing some of the, some of those specific equity things indicated in here and the achievement gap, we've had some conversations. So the things that we are doing in order to address some of those concerns that weren't specifically focused here, please don't hesitate to ensure that we're, and that we have an opportunity to share with the community that has voiced those concerns, the things that we are doing to keep those as a priority for all students.
I do appreciate it, and I appreciate that we got the community input, and we know what they wanted. And, but I still find it kind of sad that we're always chipping away. But on the other hand, with the state being where they're at, with what they consider as adequate school funding, I don't know how to get around that. I can't justify even considering a referendum when we don't know what will really happen in the future within the next few years. When one school district is above adequacy and we're below adequacy, we're hoping that they will start to address those kind of inequities. So, but I do wish we could get beyond chipping away, especially when we're talking about at least addressing class size at the, at the level where we see it would have the greatest impact. I would hope we could start to do that sooner rather than later. And I do appreciate that we're getting their mental health staff in there that's going to improve our academic achievement overall. So we are chipping away. We are always chipping away, and we are, and we always improve. So it's really hard to argue against that at all. But sometimes I find it frustrating. That's all.
Other questions or comments?
I feel the need to say chipping away.
Chipping away.
As somebody, Kathy, as somebody who sat here when you were doing major cuts, doesn't it feel at least a little better to say adding stuff?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's not.
No, and I wish, I wish we could just get the air conditioning over with. And then we could start to put money into our building, the way we're supposed to be. I mean, it just seems like we're always this way. But it is better than cutting.
I'd scare you all if I said I feel slightly optimistic. We did pay off our debt certificates, and we are, we are now moving that money into some of these projects.
No, but it, I mean, what Justin said is totally true. Like literally, the past twelve to fourteen years, this board, you know, before my time, I mean, it's like we, we thought we were taking one step ahead, and then we got knocked two steps back, you know, through the state or whatever, and, um, it's starting to look good, but I always say cautiously optimistic. I mean, you know, and I, and I wish we could get, like Kathy said, I, I totally agree. I think we're all, especially when it comes to our kids, we hate saying "chipping away", and we wish we could do everything. But I think we're doing pretty good.
So I want to thank the Engage 204 Leadership Team. Like to thank all the parents who showed up and gave us input. Like to thank you for working through some of these recommendations. Continue to work to do our best, and we will continue to engage the community, and I guess, and I know you will, provide us frequent updates on how we're progressing. So thank you. And with that, there's the board update, and I think it's relevant to some of the conversation that we had today. So I had a different order of how I was going to present this, but I have several different topics to present. And that has been over the course of the summer, the board beginning in March, April. Had a board evaluation. We also had a board workshop, and we also had a workshop with our administration to discuss where we're going, goals for 2018, 19, to look at our norms, of, a, a variety of topics. And I'm going to begin, and it's in your packet, with the Board of Education goals. I'm going to state that there's still time to work on the objectives, but I think our three board goals are pretty solid, and I think we came to consensus unless someone says we didn't, which is Board Goal One, maintain Board of Education presence in the community. Board Goal Two, be an efficient and effective governing board. And Board Goal Three, which was a new one, which was to a, a, adopt a formal equity policy for District 204. Some of the, and the basis for that discussion was that equity is referenced in Policy 2: 240 and, and Policy 2:24OE2, but it's not an in-depth equity policy. During that discussion, we talked about seeking and soliciting input, and that input was going to come from the Illinois State Board of Education, no, Illinois Association of School Boards, sorry, and stakeholders. And we discussed that we, it, this was board work, because policy work is board work, and, um, that we would also engage stakeholders. But we're just at our infancy stage. And so, uh, I'm going to ask a committee, which is always a committee of two, because we don't want to violate any Open Meeting Act policies and go to Open Meeting Act jail. So I'm going to ask Mr. Carrubus and Ms. Dunning to begin that work and start looking at, um, the Illinois Association of School Board information, and begin thinking about a process that this board can, um, implement in order that we can develop an equity policy. So, that's what I'd like to do, and I would also give you one more chance to look at those objectives. I think our goals are pretty solid. If you want to provide input, I'm asking that you do that by the end of the week, and then we can nuance some of our objectives. But those were the three goals, and I wanted to form the committee. Good.
I like all those goals, and I accept the responsibility and look forward to working on our first equity policy.
I readily appreciate and accept the charge, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Then I'm going back to where I was going to start was, which was the resolutions to the Illinois Association of School Boards. I know Ms. Peel and Mr. Carrubus represented the board. I know Ms. Donahue will help prepare one of the statements, um, for August 3rd. You guys want to give us an update?
They were adopted.
That is so short.
That's all you want me to say.
They were. It was, uh, once again, you go before a subcommittee of the ISB members, the Resolution Committee. There's a bunch of resolutions submitted by different districts. Ours was fairly non-controversial. We were looking to amend some position statements. There were some that were more controversial that regard, was regarding gun use in schools. Ours passed, which means now the next process is we go to the full assembly of the ISB, IASB, and Mr. Rising will take it from there. Unlike last year, this, this really shouldn't be a tough sell, um, and considering the other, um, more controversial issues, we'll probably breeze through. So I think, uh, high probability of getting these resolutions passed as well. I let them know that we'll probably be back next year with some more resolutions.
Well, I was going to just say that briefly, too, that I hope, uh, I, I'm glad, congratulations both Kathy and Lori, because I think they're, they're wonderful, um, things that we submitted, and, and I'm glad that they were adopted by the IASB Resolution Committee. I hope, you know, next year, I will, we're considering doing this again, that we do discuss, I, I'm sure a lot's going to take place in this next year regarding TIF talk in the state, um, but I'm hoping we, the, the board with or without me, um, next June, or May discusses this again, uh, you know, because I think there, it's good to hear that IASB along with ISBE and state legislators are talking about the identified issues that they've recognized that are going on in the state regarding TIFs and education funding. So again, I'm sure a lot will come out, but, um, depending on what comes out, I hope the board will consider that. That's all I just wanted to throw out there.
Kathy and Lori, can you briefly just talk what our, what our state's belief statements were?
You know, ours, what mine was, oops, sorry about that. Uh, it was, there was a little bit of an addition, uh, edit on it, um, which, I'm trying to find it. Why don't you go ahead and talk about yours?
So, um, my, um, belief statement was related to encouraging, um, students, uh, to register to vote. And originally started out as a standalone statement, but then IASB suggested that we amend a current, um, belief statement related to the teaching of civics and other things in the schools, that that go further, and also include encouragement to register to vote. And, uh, so, um, that was what we actually submitted, was an amendment to the current belief statement. And thank you to Kathy and, uh, Justin for covering that meeting.
Why weren't you there?
Yeah, I was on vacation. Las Vegas.
And what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas.
That's right, that's right.
Ms. Peel?
I was glad we were there, because it was interesting beforehand, so. Um, so there was an addition that they added to my, um, belief statement, and it's, um, so the whole thing is the Illinois Association of School Boards believes that schools should provide a safe and secure environment for all students and staff. Decisions of school safety drills, plans, and procedures should be made at the local level, utilizing evidence-based practices that maximize resources and effectiveness, and by soliciting input from local emergency responders, resulting in fewer physical, emotional, and psychological risks to students and staff. So they just kind of reworded stuff, and they made it very clear that you're going to be working with your local, um, emergency responders, so, um, there was nothing objective to that, or objecting to that. So, um, yeah, and it wasn't interesting. It's always interesting to listen to the folks talk there, and the, the three areas of the state that we deal with, there are different issues that they have to grapple with, are very different than ours, and, um, we're hopeful that we can all come to something that makes sense in these, and when it comes to sa, student safety, and, um, for everybody, not just for our area, but for the whole state. So it'll be interesting. I, I would love to be a fly on the wall during that meeting, actually.
There are three distinctive areas. There's the city, there's the Coller County School Districts, and then there's what you call Downstate or the rural, and, and, and they all view things differently, and, and you need to appeal to all of them, and, 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 uh, that can be challenging at times.
I'd just like to offer my congratulations to Kathy and Lori again, um, for the hard work and the effort on, uh, on coming up with the belief statements and having them submitted, and thank you, Justin and Kathy, for representing us well.
Good stuff.
Okay, moving on. During our board evaluation, uh, with the Illinois Association of School Boards, we had a opportunity to, to discuss succession planning in terms of the board and whether or not that was a good thing to do. We came to consensus that, yes, it was, and we came to consensus that that should be included in our school board reference memorandum, in which basically are, are norms and, uh, and standards of conduct. So I added a bullet point, which is the last bullet point on the Board of Education purpose. It's a little wordy, I'm certain, for some board members. However, it was my first stab at it, and again, if you could review that and provide me with any input, then we can come to agreement with that in terms of our norms and our, uh, school board reference memorandum.
Will do.
And finally, district goals. We all came to agreement on the four goals when we had our district workshop, which was to help all students grow socially, emotionally, and academically, to hire and retain high-quality, effective teacher, school leaders, and support staff, to manage resources efficiently and effectively, and for it to be student and community-focused. The board had discussion of whether or not we should focus on the grading system of A or B, and whether we should just focus on getting As, or whether A or B was a more accurate description of how we can assess the effectiveness of our school district. There was differing opinion, but there was no consensus. So the goal pretty much remains the same as we discussed in June, and I guess if there's any other further discussion in regards to that, we can either have that discussion now, or you can get some feedback to me again by Friday, and then we can get ready to move on.
Looks good to me.
Okay.
I, I was, I'm ready to go for an A instead of just an A or B, so we wanted to do that.
I like the, I don't remember what our discussion was, why we put that B in there, but I'm of the mind, um, of the A as well, whether we want to keep it at ninety-five percent or-
Uh, that would be no, we'd have to go back and get what our breakdown has been. Ask, or do something realistic, because that's a combined number currently, between the As and the Bs.
The discussion that occurred is-
And that's why I said whether or not we kept it at the-
Is A realistic? When you look, and this is based on the Five Essential Survey.
Yeah.
And you, and when you look at other districts, there's very few districts that can achieve the number of ninety-four point four percent even with the A and B.
I think there was only a handful of districts that even asked the question, because no other school districts were brave enough to ask the question. So we were one of the few, I think, that put that on, that, that put that on the survey.
Yeah, and in fact, you're right, we, as a board, we asked that the administration put that on the survey. So from my perspective, A and B is a fair number and gives us good perspective. But again, if there's some feedback you want to provide, then we can have that discussion. You can provide me some feedback, and if there, we can discuss it again at a future board meeting.
Was there any, um, conversation about, you know, maybe are we sending, if we say if we just want to have an A, ninety-five percent gives a district an A, is that sending a message to, like, you got to get an A or you're not good enough? I mean, it could be a message to our, our students or our teachers that, you know, B isn't good enough, got to get an A. But if we have A and B in there, because we vote, I mean, I've always, you know, kids get upset when they get Bs, but B is still a very good grade. So I, I guess maybe I'm reading too much into it, but there could be a message that we're sending if we only, if we say we have to get an A, and ninety-five percent has to get an A, and that's, has to give us an A.
Yeah, there, there's different perspectives. I think the majority of the grades are As, if I remember correctly. It was around sixty-five to seventy percent.
Seventy-something.
Is what I remember as the number. If people want to know, that's what it is, around sixty-five to seventy percent. So that's still a high number. Again, everything I know, and what Karen reiterates, is that if you get a number over forty-five percent-
I think nationally, they say seventy-five percent A or B is like an excellent.
Flipping around, I'm pretty darn excited that only five percent are graded a C, D, or F. So, you know, I mean-
That's a good point.
I think we need a presentation from Janet.
Janet, they look too excited over there.
It's like, what?
Okay, so again, I'm going to do this one last time in the, in the discussion. Get some feedback to me, see if we need further discussion.
Can we just emphasize a little bit about this, help our students grow socially, emotionally, and academically, and how pretty cool that is that we have that as our goal?
Sure, you can discuss that.
I mean, it was not there before, and we barely mentioned that, that this is new. And I, I'm looking at it, I think people might go, "Well, what's the objective that goes with this socially and emotionally?" And I know we talked about that, um, and decided there were so many different facets and data points that we can look at, um, so we will look at those in general. But, um, it was really important for our administration to recommend this, and for us to adopt that we feel we, our students need to be focused on their social and emotional well-being before they can reach their academic ability, and I, I think that is a very huge statement that we've made.
Yeah, and just for the community, too, we, if I remember correctly, on that Saturday, we probably spent a good three, four hours discussing this first district goal. And for those people that might remember previously, our first district goal before was just about academics. And the administration and the board recognized that our kids are more than just a grade, and, um, let's develop the whole child, kind of- And let's develop the whole child, kind of what Kathy was alluding to, and, and also help all students grow socially and emotionally, as well as academically. And that's why you see those other sub-points under, under District Goal One as far as increased participation and, you know, post-secondary experience with, with classes and as well as the goal around suspensions by reducing that. So, you know, and then, I mean, you could keep breaking down the points, you know, that's hence one of the reasons why you saw us hire so many support staff people from social workers. And so, so, you know, these are the high level, but obviously, there's much more things that kind of go underneath those things. But yeah, I'm, I'm very excited, like Kathy said, that we, we did this, looking at the whole kid.
Just a point of editing, on the third paragraph there, the post-secondary experience with AP dual credit is in parentheses, as a beginning parentheses, but where does that, is that supposed to end after credential? Okay. And with each student group, that's our, the federally identified student groups?
For all of those, we would disaggregate.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So, you're going to increase the percentage of seniors in those AP dual credit classes by 92%? Or 92% of those students will be enrolled in those?
Have at least 90%.
Will have at least taken one within their high school career. I think that's what we talked about.
Okay. Was any, because I wasn't there that day. Was any consideration given to students with IEPs? Because that's, that's a, I don't know that that's a realistic goal then, honestly.
We're, we're pretty close to that now.
Right now? Of IEP kids?
No, just of the whole entire population have at least taken one of those.
But this says in each student group?
We just say with increased participation in each student group. We're not saying that it has to be 92% in each, 92% overall.
That's what I want to clarify. I, I understand it now. That, that makes sense, thank you.
So, as we take a look at this over this weekend and send comments to Mike, then we may want to take a look to make sure that's clarified.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I wasn't, because I read that differently.
Okay, and again, I'm encouraged, as Mark addressed and Kathy, that there is a suspension objective there. And creating good school culture is important. And of course, the less suspensions we have, the better the school culture would be, I would guess. So, I congratulate the administration and maybe us for agreeing to these objectives. Any other input or information with that? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.